Gotcha.
How are ya?
Good evening. Welcome to the April 8, 2013 meeting of the Carver School Committee. If you would all please rise, we will send the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. This evening, we had invited FinCon to join us and unfortunately they weren't able to, so we're gonna move on to comments from the general public this evening.
But we will do the budget session.
Yes. Oh, we will.
But we can do it after the regular comment stuff. I just put it up here in case the FinCon came and then they didn't have to do all that.
Gotcha. Gotcha. So with that, we have, are there any comments from the general public this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to comments from the EAPC.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. The EAPC would like to take a moment to acknowledge the time and the energy that has been put in by the town and the school department in regards to the budget process, your cooperative efforts to try to maintain current staffing and the programs, your award-winning programs, by the way, reconfirm your commitment to the future. On behalf of the Education Association and the Children of Carver, we'd like to thank you. On another note, a team of administrators and teachers have been diligently working on the new evaluation tool that has been mandated by the State Department of Education. The spirit of cooperation has made this process invaluable. Liz and I thank those volunteers who have already used many, many hours of personal time so that the tool can be implemented as mandated by the state this September. So I guess the message for tonight is cooperation does make it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would like to bring us back to our agenda with the budget session with Patrick and Liz.
Thank you. Patrick and I usually play tag-team on this, and most of this you're gonna find that you've already heard about, but this is our final presentation, and anyone's welcome to ask questions, school committee audience, so you just, you know, kinda stop us when you come to that point. You might say the presentation looks a little similar to last year's. It's different numbers, but I try to keep it in the same format so it's easier to understand. Okay, next slide, please. Each year, we prepare a level service budget to begin the budget process, which means no growth in personnel or programs, maintaining. Projected increases in expenses are included in this budget. Projected increases are to maintain the current level of programs and services. That's why we generally end up with a gap we have to close by other means. So we have, our building blocks are the projected expenses, the projected revenues, and then what we call revenue offsets, which we'll talk about like circuit breaker. And as usual, we have outlined this budget by cost centers, and you'll see. Patrick.
Okay. What we'll do now is go over what we call the cost centers, which are broken into about seven or eight various cost centers that we have. They're the same ones every year, and really, there are only really a handful of drivers for this whole budget. And what we've got right here is the central office cost center, and as you can see, there's an increase of about $576,000 in here. Reasons for the change, obviously, increases in health insurance, both active and retiree, Plymouth County Retirement, FICA payroll, and when, in the past three years, we've had the benefit of what was called the Ed Jobs Bill, back part of the era. And we don't have that anymore. And we were very, what I think, very efficient with those funds. We did the benefit of three years out of them. Last year was $150,000 that we were able to use. Towards health insurance, this year, we don't have any. So with the early-on concept that not knowing what health insurance would increase, we just use a blanket 10%. The 10% would cover any increases or potential increases in the premiums, and would also cover the possibilities of additional employees coming onto the roles. So when, originally, we had about $405,000 worth of health insurance increases. And again, that's increased by the $150,000 in Ed Jobs grant that we did not have again. So we had to add that back in. The Plymouth County Retirement, another 10% increase. That's been going up and up and up every year, sometimes double digits, $59,000. Retiree health insurance, using 10%, going up about $76,000. We've got our, some other smaller numbers, a little bit more in vocational tuition, which are basically the agricultural schools, because we've only got a couple of seniors, and we've got about four applications in already. So, put one more tuition in there, a little increase in our municipal health insurance.
Can I just say something? The vocational school tuition has taken on unprecedented increases. You can pay up to $24,000, $25,000 for vocational school tuition, which you could also send a child to UMass for, so. We have spoken as superintendents to the legislature and said that while we want to send children to these programs, we have to find a way that towns can afford it, because it is a good opportunity for children, but the cost has, the magnitude of the cost is more than 10 times what any school has experienced in the last five years. And to that end, they've appointed Peter Schaefer from Abingdon, who has, I believe, 28 kids and vocational school placements, and Abingdon's been very hard hit by this, so he's on a task force appointed by the legislature. So I do think we're going to see some, either some dedicated revenue stream directly to the vocational schools to take the burden off the towns, or some other type of, hopefully, federal assistance for vocational schools. It's very expensive to operate. I worked in Silver Lake, which has its own vocational school, and the equipment alone is astronomical for the students to work in the current work environment, you know, to maintain it. So I do understand what the cost is. It's just been a very hard things for towns and school committees to keep up with, so I didn't wanna say that. The other thing I wanted to say is, there were two places. I put 2012 instead of 2013, because I was working off of last year's template, so yours says 2012, but it's really 2013. That and on the custodian section. I'm done now, Pat.
Okay. And then just fill in with a couple of other things. Increased municipal insurance a little bit, because I figure our rates are gonna go up because of our lightning strike last, about a year ago now, so, and that, in all told, it was about $180,000 of damage that we actually collected on, and are back even in a better position as we were before. And just some other residual things that go through the several dozen line items that make this one up. So if there's, are there any questions on central office, or any of the, what we would call some of the big drivers?
Sure, Pat. At this point, clearly, we're still kinda ballparking health insurance.
We are.
At a 10%, so there's still a possibility. When will we know when kind of the percentages are handed down?
Well, we're working with the town on that right now. The thing we'll say right about now is, none of these, well, we've made some adjustments, and we've got some other adjustments left to go. We've adjusted some areas, as you'll see later, for our school choice, for our circuit breaker, and what we have not adjusted for yet are retirees, health insurance, and any other increases in revenues that may come our way. The health insurance is certainly not gonna be 10%. It's gonna be closer to the lower single numbers. So we're gonna gain some there. I just don't know exactly what it is yet, because the rates have not been set yet. And they should be coming along pretty soon. They'll be set this month. So we know it's not gonna be 10%.
Right. If you remember, the state now requires all towns to have a GIC look-alike or better.
Yep.
And so that's what the town is busy negotiating with all the employee unions, et cetera, to see, you know, if we go to the GIC look-alike, or we use the Carver Gateway Plan, which has so far served us well, but we do wanna look at the GIC and see if it saves money, of course. So that's why, usually by the middle of April, we know the exact rate for the health insurance, but it might be a little more prolonged because of this negotiation process.
Right. Exactly. Any other questions on the central office numbers? Okay. Next, we've got, transportation is next. Basically, a small decrease, but essentially the same. And again, this is the non-salary part of the transportation. Special education. In one respect here, it shows a very small increase, but again, it's unadjusted to this point. One of the bright spots in our budget has been special education, as you've seen a couple of presentations about that in previous meetings. Our Director of Special Education, along with Superintendent, worked very hard to provide high levels of services to kids that need it, and providing those in-house rather than out at more expensive outplacement facilities. That has provided us, really, when you look at the two numbers, they're about, you know, 1.2 million each. The FY13 number was adjusted by half a million dollars. The FY14 number hasn't been adjusted yet. So you can just see the magnitudes that have been gained within our special education costs.
And these are only the out-of-district placements, either private, collaboratives. These are not what we, this does not count the expenses we hold in-house for teaching and learning for special education students. So this is, and this, this does not represent any, we're working hard to establish another in-district program that will bring a few students back, and you'll see a reduction in this as soon as we gel that program up, because particularly in our autism services programs, we're able to do an equal or better job here. And so we're gonna grow another small autism program to accommodate the children who are coming from the elementary, the middle school, and bringing two middle school students back. So that's one of the ways we're able to maybe offset some of this. But when we start on this budget in November, we start with the number of children we have in November, and now we know that you have to have a certain number of children, whether it's feasible to support the program in the district. So now we know we have them, so now we can do some adjustments for that as well. But this is our level service budget.
So, Pat, with that, are we saying we finished around $700,000 or so for a special ed budget this fiscal year? If you're saying we budgeted $1,200 and brought in $500,000?
Well, you'll see that a little bit later, that we're gonna adjust it again, but this has just been huge, and has had a huge positive impact on our budget, particularly in times when there, when the increases in revenue certainly aren't keeping up with what we needed to do, just for basic inflation and contractual obligations. So a lot of credit going to the special education department for not only reducing costs in a very big way, but providing as good or better services to the kids that really need them. So you really can't say enough about that.
I would have a question there, Pat. I know that fiscally, this looks really good. Is there any impact on this in-house, in the schools? I mean, what is the need that's being brought back? Is that being addressed in a separate situation with new hires? Is that an inclusion situation, where we're bringing kids into an inclusion room? Where, like, I know fiscally that this looks really good, because we're doing this, but how is that working as far as in-house, and how is that transition going?
Most of the children have been elementary school children that we've brought back, and we have developed two specific programs for autistic children and children with social, emotional behaviors, and they work just, when our children go to Pilgrim Collaborative, some of them, you know, they go to some of their classes in their collaborative classroom, and some of the classes, they're integrated out into regular ed classrooms, as they are able to go, as meets their needs. And they do the same when they're with us. So they might be in there for three subjects and out for two, or depends on the student, the level of their ability to open the regular ed classroom, but then, of course, they always go with the paraprofessional. And yes, we do hire staff, but even with hiring the staff to work individually with these children, or as a classroom teacher, it's still more cost-effective, and to a parent, they're much happier with the services. So it's worked very well, and we have more and more requests to do this. That's why we're gonna grow this little program at the middle, high school, because those children now, a lot of them are moving up. Three years ago, one of our students wouldn't even talk, and now because she's in this wonderful environment, man, oh man, she talks my ear off. So, you know, it's been wonderful. She's formed a special relationship with one of the workers in the cafeteria. It's just been a terrific experience for these children, and it's also better for them to be in their hometown than, you know, bust far away every day. But it, I would say it has nothing but a positive impact on bringing them back to our school, and I think we're able to serve them both in their classroom and in the, out in phys ed and art and music and things like that.
But if you think about it, I mean, so there's a program, we send four kids out for $50,000 a child, there's $200,000. We could hire a lead teacher and an aide for far less than that. You've got your own in-house program, like we said, the benefits are, the child is in their own community, benefiting from the social piece of it, and then the parent hopefully feels more in control in their home community. So there's just a lot of positives that we can do, and we've clearly seen the great work that our staff can do in having those in-house programs. Communities are then gonna wanna come to us, to our program, and then we can benefit from those dollars potentially as well. So there's some other added benefit.
We do have one tuitioned-in student that we have a program in our high school that they're not able to find otherwise, so.
Sure. Which is revenue.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a bad thing.
Okay.
Okay. Good. The next couple are just pretty much what they were before. Our custodial and maintenance, we're coming in at the same number. We've got a line in there for extraordinary maintenance-type things, which we, which is pretty much, you know, unanticipated types of things, and that's $48,000, and we generally go through that plus more each year. The other parts of anything with custodial maintenance, particularly when they're larger, they're gonna go into other types of funding, such as through the capital outlay program. If we need large types of situations, or equipments, or any of those types of things, they're gonna go through capital outlay rather than our operating budget. So that's gonna stay pretty much the same. And then we'll go on to technology, which shows a very small increase, but again, it's about the same for technology. What we wanna do is just try to keep going with what we have, and we've got capital requests in for increases in technology, and sometimes at the end of the year, if we have, if we do have a little bit of surplus money left, we try to supplement the technology situation with that.
Now, the technology improvements that were required to meet the testing with the state, is that gonna go through capital outlay as well?
Yes, it is. We've got $100,000 request into capital. We've gotten $100,000 each year in our five-year plan for technology improvements, dealing with the testing and beyond.
Is that between the two schools, or just focused at the high school mostly?
It's between the two schools, because they're gonna test third through.
Fifth, right.
Fifth, yeah. So I would like to say that at some point in time, we need to adequately budget for technology that, I mean, it's very good that capital outlay is working with us, but it's not going to get our children where they need to be when they finish our schools if we continue to budget. We have only 28 student computers to serve 856 children at the elementary school, and where we don't wanna spend all day on a computer, they do need to know how to use one. And at the high school, we have a lot of computers, but we don't have other types of technology that they're going to be using when they graduate from Carver High School or go to a job or the military. We are not preparing our students adequately for technology. It is the biggest weakness. We're doing fantastic in a lot of ways, but this is something, at some point, we're gonna have to address, and some of it will happen through the requirements of the state to test online, and we're gonna have to buy tablets of some course, and we'll talk more about all the different, we have, we're having an audit now to see what it would take to get us ready to be connected and have enough bandwidth, because we don't have any of that too.
All right. Just an anecdote on that. It is a very important thing to start moving on. We did a pilot program at the school, and a lot of the kids took a test, a hard copy test, and they did very well, and they took the same exact test online, and they bombed.
Because they're not used to it.
That format. Right. And it's really preparing them to have to do that. That first-year transition's gonna be really difficult anyway, but to really start moving in that direction is an important aspect, because it is all moving that way.
Well, we're hoping to, capital outlay will come through, and we'll be able to use some of this year's, you know, end-of-the-year money, but we didn't have to spend as much money on heat as we thought we would. So, and to at least have enough tablets that every child can have a year's worth of practice with various different things, because 2015 is gonna be here sooner than we think.
Well, and I think you hit on the point. My question was really gonna be to, the $80,000 is really just typical maintenance operations, really not improving our program.
Not at all.
And I think that needs to be our focus moving forward as a committee, is, this needs to be a key piece of the budget, because we've gotta get, as James, as we all know, we gotta get ourselves in a position to be ready, not only for the testing, but really for education moving forward.
That line item should be $200,000 minimum every year in order to maintain a technology for our students, that they need to be productive citizens. And even then, there will have to be some capital improvements along the way to replace, you know, we have a replacement plan, and, you know, we do a grade level at a time, but that's teacher computers, you know, just so they can use the data they need to use. So it's just all of this hit at the same time the recession hit, and we've never been able to step it up. So it is, it's our next big step, and we can't do it at the expense of firing teachers, because we've fired all the teachers we can get rid of, you know, that's, we're gonna have to somehow do this.
The next, actually, the next two, we talk about the elementary school, we talk about the high school. It's their basics of supplies and what they need to run in their discretionary budgets for their schools. Elementary school is up about $1,000. The middle, the middle high school is up about $159, so essentially the same. We try to keep that, we try to keep them going the same each year, and they've been good about doing it. Again, it doesn't allow for any growth potentials and so forth, but we do keep them at least in the ballpark of where they were the year before.
Meredith, can you go back to the elementary? So if you know that we have 857 students in our elementary school, you can quickly see that that does not allot very much money per child.
No.
And if you go to the high school, where we have 945, again, it's more, but it's not, it's not more per child. So a big expense in high schools is buying textbooks, and I happen to think the textbooks are gone out of business, because I think they're gonna be all tablet-based.
Pretty soon.
Yeah. So, I mean, we've already had the, you know, the introduction to that. I do think there will always be books in elementary schools, but I do believe, and since we don't budget for textbooks, we use serendipity, you know, the end-of-the-year money to buy books that we need, because we've just never had the money to budget for it, and we got ding for that on our NIESK report. Along with the technology, we're gonna have to plan to buy the license for the textbooks, and, believe me, they're gonna charge just as much for the license as they did for the book. So it's just, so, I'm not meaning to depress people, but it's just an area we've got to begin, we can't be back in the 20th century when we have, with the 21st century demands. So we've got to start.
Proactive.
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll get into the athletic department, and there's been a small decrease in this, and this was dealing with the less need for transportation and officials for the upcoming schedules, but there, these are for the supplies for all the sports, from fall through spring, the officials, transportation, and so forth. So that's got a small decrease.
Do you remember Mike said that we changed, they reorganized the leagues on the South Shore, and so we don't go as far away? And also, we reorganized our teams and put some of the same teams on, you know, instead of just sending a freshman bus and the whole team, we've been sending all the kids at once, so we can save a little money that way.
Here's our other big driver, obviously, is gonna be salaries, and that's about $586,000. We have, again, not offset by anything yet, and we'll get to that in a minute, but we've got contractual obligations, cost of living, which is about $263,000. We've got step increases in the teacher's contract, which amounted to $155,000, with fully seven that went from the big step nine to 10. So that was a big one. We had two teachers that weren't replaced this year, but are coming back next year. It's about $110,000. Two teachers who were replaced, who were replaced, returning from a leave of absence is about $40,000. And then we've got some adjustments to the bus drivers' guidance requirements and a little bit of residual. So that's about $586,000, with the potential of being offset with the, an amount from school choice, which you'll see shortly. Any questions on salaries? All right. We'll go to the next one, which is, here we've got a summary of the budgets. We've got the 2013 budget at $21,324,392, the FY14 budget at $22,516,093, for an increase of almost $1.2 million. And as you see, back in 2013, there were offsets that we had applied of $150,000 on the Ed Jobs Bill, which is the one that we don't have anymore. We used about a half a million dollars in Circuit Breaker, which is a reimbursement from the state on special education costs, and we had $60,000 in school choice, which is the elementary school, kindergarten, school choice program. And we go to the next slide. We'll see the same information above, but you'll see down below, we don't have, again, we don't have the Ed Jobs to offset anymore. We are gonna commit to the same number from Circuit Breaker we did, and the same number for school choice. So at this point, we've got a total offset of $568,478. Now, that's before we get into some other areas, again, such as the, if there, health insurance, any other, any other revenue sources from the town or the state, and retirements.
So where does the money come from? The level funded from 213 to 214, the governor's budget has us at $9,644,539, but the budgets aren't finished yet, but that's the number we're using for now.
Is there an explanation on formula for his budget for us, or is it just a?
He, well, he put in, actually... He, well, he put in actually a little bit more money. It would be about $44,000 more money, but it hasn't passed, so we level funded the number in our budget. Now, we could reduce our gap by using, if we get the extra 44, and occasionally, the, you know, House and Senate give us a little bit more, but this is based on his level funding our budget, not counting the $44,000 that we would have gotten, which had a formula to it, some, you know, it's some much per child. So, no, no increase is the answer there, well, no measurable increase. So, then, the town of Carver, if they level fund us, this will be the contribution from the town, $11,679,853, which is a very generous amount, but it does recommend level funding. And there had been talk that we might get a 1% earlier in the budget season, and so nothing is, you know, certain until the legislature gets done with the budgets, and then the town knows what they're getting, we know what we're getting from the state. So, we have the potential of getting $43,900 additional from Chapter 70, and school choice and Circuit Breaker together with the 568, so that gives us a slightly higher number to bridge the gap. So, our new gap is $623,228, which does not include some other offsets. Since we are working with the town, we do believe there will be a significant, but yet unknown, amount of money to close the gap from health insurance. The school choice that's in the budget now is basing on, based on the children that are currently in school and kindergarten and first grade that we have now. That's roughly, you know, $5,000 per child. So, if we're able to accept school choice again, there might be a little additional. Retirements are not yet known completely. We have seven retirement letters. I think there will be eight by tomorrow. And then there's the potential of two more. So, there could be 10 retirements. And Patrick can talk about?
Well, what I did do is what the, when I, when I put a piece together, we had actually six retirement letters in, so I did an estimate on that. It's about a savings of about $160,000 with the six retirements in. So, if you go back to the approximately $620,000 gap, and if we want to reduce that by about 160, so now we're down to about 460.
What about replacing the people who were retired?
Yeah, that's my point.
Oh, that counts replacing.
So, that does.
That's replacing.
Just wanted to make certain that that was included.
Yes. You know, but most of our teachers are going out at the top, and so, and so then, you know, we're going to hire eager young things that can help us work.
So, we do, and we, and we have some more, you know, yet to come. So, as, as we get them, we're keeping a running, a running total, but as you see, that, that's been, that's been helping us out. And then we've got the rest in the, you know, is there going to be a potential increase in the town contribution? Because the way that it's, the way that it's, it's calculated right now, and the, the numbers that are, that are coming out of the town administrator's office have us exactly level funded. So, that's what we're going with. And as, as we've always talked about before, we, we meet the number that the, that the town gives us.
And we will meet the number. Part of the slowness of our budget process is that the town lost its town accountant, and we only have a part-time.
Very part-time.
Very part-time. And so, the usual give and take and going back and forth with the town with up-to-the-minute numbers, we just haven't been able to have, because the town accountant is just doing the beast business that has to get done today. You know, the, the people they've hired on the interim, and this isn't a criticism on anybody, John Adams was just a very hard person to replace, and through many interviews, they have not found a replacement. So, it seems longer, and it is longer, but, you know, I feel confident that we will meet the town's number. We just aren't sure what exactly that number is right now. But it's been a difficult year to put the budget together because of this.
I guess if I do do rough math on this, so say retirement's 160, we say potential from the Chapter 70 could be another 40. Say if we took five more, school choice is like 25,000 there. So, that's roughly 225,000 or so, leaving, leaving us 400 grand short. That would say, if that 10%, we would have to have the full 10% go to zero with healthcare for that even to make up that gap. So, for that to take place probably isn't going to happen. So, if we kind of hit the max at each of these numbers, we're potentially, and I guess the one variable would be the potential for the increase in the town contribution.
Well, we're going to have more retirements, too, or potentially more retirements.
So, some growth, potential growth there. So, we're still talking a pretty fine line. So, there's potentially maybe some tough decisions to be made, because this number is seeming like it's kind of at the ceiling of where we need to get to.
Our, it's, there's a chance that our Circuit Breaker number will go up a little bit more, too. So, well, not just a chance, we know pretty much what the Circuit Breaker's going to be funded this year. They funded it a percent of 100% instead of fully funding it. So, but the number is higher. Is it 68 or 70?
It's approaching 75. It's been going up the last couple of years.
75.
I don't, I don't know what it's going to do this year.
Right.
And that's another part of the whole thing, is that, you know, the governor comes out with a budget, and this year, it's all, it's all different, because, not to get political, but the, but the, but the governor's got a lot of big tax increases in, in his budget, and you can see the, the dynamics between him and the legislature right now. And, you know, who knows where that's going to go? And whatever, there wasn't a huge increase in, in education funding, even in the governor's budget. For us, it was, it was $44,000. So, we don't know where that's going to go, and that's yet to be determined. And that's part of the difficulty, too, is where is this budget going to come in? So, they're, they're negotiating this back and forth right now, so we, we don't know where that's going to come. The House is going to be out, House budget out probably in a few days, I think, around the 10th, maybe? And so, we'll, we'll see what happens at that point.
We have had bigger gaps and closed them.
We have.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And it looks a little scary, but I'm very confident that we're going to meet the town's number, and we're not going to have to do any drastic reductions. It's just all the uncertainty of the last-minute numbers that puts us in this position. The, the health insurance is a big player, but there is, there is a potential to gain most of our gap in the health insurance. So, I, I think that that's going to be a very big player in this final thing, but it's nothing that we should worry about right now. I mean, we're not ready to pass the budget, because we don't have enough numbers, but, you know, we, I'm very confident that we'll, we'll do this and we'll maintain our current programs and services.
We're a very large part of that health program through the town, too, as, as, as an entity.
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, do you sort of have an update of where that's going, Pat, and how the negotiations and talks are going, the cooperation as far as the town coming towards an idea? Is there a timeframe on that at all, as far as where they need to be?
We, we're working towards a timeframe that we'd, we'd like to see something, let me just, we, we are in kind of a negotiation, too, so I really can't say a lot at this point, but we're actively, we're actively, we're actively in meetings, we're actively following the, the process according to the statute. And we've got a, we've got a couple more meetings to have, and then we're going to be able to, I think, identify, you know, where we, where, where our number's going to be and where that's going to fall in. Sorry to be vague.
That's all right.
When the negotiations are done, he'll tell all. So, that's the, that's the last of it. Do you have any more questions?
Any questions in the school committee?
Or anyone?
I guess then, kind of, what's the next step in this process? We really have to wait for these numbers to settle down before we can finalize the process with what we do.
Well, we continue to talk to the town, and so we will try to get the town's numbers solidified by early May, and hopefully the legislature, this is the first year in the past three that they haven't acted in March, so hopefully, they will get their business done and let us know in early May. And then, the insurance, which they have, you have a meeting this week, right? Or next week?
Um, no, not, not this week. We've got an audit meeting this week.
Okay.
We've got insurances, they're, they're setting up the next meeting right now.
Okay, so, I would say mid-May, we would have more definite, probably not by our school committee meeting, which falls, you know, like on May 8th or something, because May 1st is the first Wednesday, and Monday in May, I mean, it comes very early in the month. So, anyway, we will have to wait till then, but we'll keep you posted, but I'm, I'm feeling good about it. We've been more uncertain than in years past, and this is my seventh budget, eighth budget in Carver, so I've more worried many, many years than I am this year. But it's difficult when you're not here every day and you don't hear the back and forth, I know that.
All right, thank you. With that, I believe we have a representative from captain's counsel. Come on up. Just come up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brandon Walsh, and I'm a captain of the golf team for Carver Middle High School. And coming up soon, we are planning on having a car wash this Saturday from 10 to 2, but the weather is supposed to be kind of cold and rainy, so Wednesday, we're going to have another meeting to pick another date, hopefully sometime after school vacation, the next Saturday after that. And basically, what we're doing is, we're having a banquet at the end of the year, and we need to raise money for it. So, we came up with the idea that if each captain got the idea to go up to people and ask them to get sponsors from each person, like X amount of dollars for every car that we wash, and then at the end, people will have to pledge that money to us, and then all that money can go towards our banquet. So, for example, if someone donated $5 for every car, and we did 10 cars, that's $50, and hopefully, it will turn out great. And we are trying to get flyers across town, and we're getting large posters in the school.
Where are you going to have it?
Um, we're going to have it at Our Lady of Lord's Parish right on 58.
So, watch for the signs, so you can get your car washed.
Yeah. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have any in student council this evening.
Correct.
With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Hopefully, had a chance to look over the March 4th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 4th, 2013, regular session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and second, any discussion on the March 4th, regular session minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Seeing none, it's unanimous. Now, we'll move on to the executive session minutes of March 4th.
I make a motion, approve the executive session minutes on March 4th.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion on the executive session minutes of March 4th?
Does that need to be listed as an executive and reconvene, because that was also minutes from when we came back afterwards? I don't know if that needs to be distinguished that way?
I believe, Emery, I think she included the, in the first, they included in the regular session minutes, the reconvene session. Did you include those?
She wasn't here.
Right, but you sent them to her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so she just put that in, okay.
Yes, I believe they are there.
Yeah. I know she wasn't here, but, you know, she just embedded them in those minutes.
Okay.
So, I think we're.
Yes, if you look on the page previous there.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have a motion and second. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? It is unanimous. Moving on to the March 12th, special session of the select board meeting.
This was not the select meeting meeting. I had some questions on that.
Correct.
This was the meeting downstairs.
This was our special meeting regarding graduation.
Right.
Before this, like, it should just say before.
Sorry. Yeah.
And down at the bottom, it looks like there was a, that where it says 8:45 PM, call the order, was from something else.
It was the second half, right?
Of, of other minutes. No, no.
This was, was this upstairs?
No, this was downstairs.
And then you convened a session upstairs, but those will be in, in those minutes of the, the combined, like, would be part of the select minutes.
Yeah, I didn't actually put anything in on that, because we never.
No.
It wasn't official enough, and I had some questions on that, so I didn't add that in. I wanted to talk to you first before I did anything else.
Correct, so, right, it does appear that there are.
That was just something like a, I didn't cut it when I.
Right.
Pasted the top part.
It's all good, so, Emery, you clear on that?
No, I'm sorry.
And after roll call vote was unanimous.
Yes.
It then says 8:45. Those are actually notes from the previous executive session, so those should not be included.
Those need to be struck.
Struck from there.
Thank you.
So, I believe you're asking, so when we're in concurrent session with the board of selectmen, as long as we convene and then adjourn, then it gets embedded in the board of selectmen's minutes, and we don't have to take separate minutes.
Okay.
Because it's the same meeting, essentially. So, we can get a copy of those for people if you want.
Okay. So, we have amended minutes.
I make a motion to accept the special session minutes on Tuesday, March 12th, 2013, as amended.
As amended, yeah.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? We have a motion to accept the minutes as amended, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains or opposed?
I abstain.
We have one abstention. All righty.
Communications.
Moving on to communications.
So, our wonderful prize-winning culinary team is off again. They won second place in the cooking competition and first place in the business plan, and Pat's going to speak to that. He's their coach, by the way.
Chef Portolans was going to be here tonight, but he had a, an unknown family situation that he had to be called out on today, so he expresses his inability to be here. So, I would just kind of take a, because I did have the good fortune of being able to work with him and the group here. There is, there's a yearly culinary competition at the Court on Blue in, down in Cambridge, which is a, which is a culinary, a secondary culinary school. And there's a dozen or so schools from around the Commonwealth that participate in that competition. They all have a particular curriculum, and they participate in the competition. You have one team that, that presents a, a management business plan for a restaurant, and then you get another team that actually does the cooking and prepares, prepares a meal and a dessert for, to be judged by a panel of, of some pretty high-level chefs from some of the best restaurants and hotels in Boston. And so, I had a chance to work with the, with the management group and working with them on their business plan and their presentation, and we started in that in about November, and worked up to in February, where actually went with them down to Cambridge and was able to see them perform their, perform their presentation. The, the really striking thing about this is that the competition on both the state and the national level, and when they go to the, proudly represent both Carver and the state of Massachusetts next week in Baltimore, with between 43 states and United States territories, at a huge competition down in Baltimore. But they are one of the few participants that are from a non-vocational environment, which makes this all the more amazing to, to see this group. They, uh, the chef works wonders, uh, with this group of kids.
In a vocational school, the students spend half their day in the vocational program.
Yeah, half a year as opposed to one period a day. One-seventh of their year as opposed to half their year.
Of course, our students have spent hours after school too.
Yeah, after school, I was with them today.
And our teacher.
Was with them today. And, uh, just such a great group of kids. It was a real honor and a pleasure for me. But you've got, um, you've got, uh, Dan Portolins, who really is the, uh, sets the tone and sets the leadership for this whole thing. He motivates those kids and, uh, these kids just do a fantastic job. And, um, they won the, um, the business management presentation, uh, part of this in, in Cambridge. They came in second in the food preparation. Last year they won both and they went down to Baltimore last year and actually represented both, both Carver and the state in both. This year they're going down and they're going to represent Carver and the state in the, in the management, uh, business presentation. So it was just, uh, a thrill for me to, to, to work with them. And, um, we're actually, they're planning to bring back the prize, so hopefully they will.
I hope they bring us back some good.
Well, that, that's my point, it's, I'm still waiting.
Yeah, I know.
Well, to kind of this continues in the conversation we had earlier when we talked about VOTEC schools. Is this something that we treat that way and could potentially be a growth in that program? That we could bring in other districts? Clearly we have a tremendous program, that's, there's no doubt. And not that we want to look at every one of our programs as, as potential revenue, but in this day and age, we sort of need to. So is this a field that we feel we could potentially increase in?
Definitely, we have an award-winning program ever since Chef Portolins has come here and worked with our students. And it is potential. But I would love to give you a tour of the classroom slash, they're in an alt-home act room. They have no industrial chef-like preparations. We did get them a new refrigerator a couple of years ago.
Electric ovens too, isn't it?
Yeah.
They get, yeah, they get gas ovens, we, we did get them a better sink though.
Yeah, so it's, I'd love to win a, you know, an instant makeover for that room because they get such wonderful things out of the most compromised space. It's, I don't think the space would attract, when you go to the other vocational schools around here, that people, if they only saw the cover and not the book, they would.
Well, I guess that's just a testament then to the program and how well they've done with what they have to work with.
Yes.
Really is.
There's got to be some sort of TLC show.
Exactly.
Somebody can grab.
Now, when you retire from the school committee, Callie, this is your job, you have to find this one, okay? Another prize-winning is our, um, middle high school technology education program. They had students that, um, competed in the semi-final round. I haven't heard the results of that in the bridge contest. But they were definitely made the qualifying round. So this is good for Mr. Rota and his students. So, um, it's Kyle Rizzuto and Holly Lazon who have qualified. So we'll look forward to hearing about their future results in that competition. And the other one is, you all got this, but just, um, they can't, they had to cancel the plans for April 30th, um, for the Day on the Hill. And has, instead, they're going to have a May 21st event, um, for, um, individual town, school committee members to go to the state house in which they will promote the legislative agenda for the, for public education. It's the same thing we go to every year. I will attend and Paula said she'd like to go and anyone else who would like to go, just, um, let Amory know and we'll get all registered for it. Usually I pick you up and we drive up to the T-stop and take the T and so don't have to pay to park on Beacon Hill. But anybody who would like to go, please let us know, new members included. So that's all we have for, um, communications.
And that will move on to the reports from the superintendent?
We currently belong to two educational collaboratives. Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which has its offices in Pembroke. And, uh, Pilgrim Academy for high school students is over in Plymouth. But a lot of their programs are housed in our, in the schools of the membership. They don't have a building per se. And although they've provided us with many, many wonderful services, the population of our current students, we don't need their services as much as we have needed in the past. I am recommending that we drop our membership in Pilgrim. The end result of that is, um, our tuition rates stay the same because they don't allow you to charge members and non-members different rates, the state doesn't. But I would no longer be on the board in their multiple committees. There's a real problem with the board of directors in that they can't get a quorum at any of the meetings. It's, it's, of all the meetings I've been to this year, there's only been one meeting where we have a quorum because they meet at night and, um, now it has to be either superintendents or school committee members and we can't get a quorum of either one of them. So it's become a, a logistical problem for scheduling my time. I'll set aside the time and not do something in Carver. And then I get there and there's, we can't make any decisions and we have to reschedule the meetings. And, um, and since that we have brought so many children back, it's my recommendation that we no longer need to be a member of that organization. I do have, they're completely financially solvent. I included some things, if you wanted to look at their, um, annual report. I have two copies you can look at, but we should probably discuss it if you, or you can ask me questions.
What happens if you, if we need to go back with them? That would be my question.
We could rejoin, you just vote again to rejoin and,
Okay, so it's not.
It's not, it's not a permanent decision. It's the legislation that changed around the collaboratives. It used to be you could charge a non-member school district a lot more money, but the legislation's even that and you can just charge the same rate. So there's no particular advantage except to being a decision maker. And I've been on their board for, well, count in Silver Lake, for 11 years. So I know the organization in and out, but, um, right now I just don't see your, my, my time as a function of what you want me to do, to be well invested to be on this board.
I agree with that. And is, there's no membership dues?
No, no.
All righty.
So that would require a, a motion and second. And I wrote it out, I think.
I love when you make it easy on us. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to recommend resigning the Carver Public School District's membership in the Pilgrim Area Collaborative effective April 8th, 2013.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to resign from the Plymouth Area Collaborative, Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? It is unanimous.
Um, part of the new legislation around collaboratives also requires that each collaborative provide a quarterly report and that I report that to the school committee. So I have included the quarterly report from REEDS, which is a one-page document. And there's also a summary of the 2014 budget, which we have worked on. I'm on both the budget and the personnel committee at REEDS. And, um, we've worked really hard to maintain the, as low tuition as possible and meet all the services of the children for Carver and all the other districts.
About how many students do we have at REEDS?
Um, it differs because the main ser- service that we use with REEDS is a 45-day placement. When we have a child in crisis, we send them there for a 45-day placement and they recommend what the next step for that child is. So one month you can have 12 in different programs. We, they have a deaf and hard of hearing program, we have children there. But it fluctuates monthly because of the 45-day placement.
So really we utilize their diagnostic skills.
Very, they, they have a, each of the collaborators specialize in some unique service. And they do deaf and hard of hearing and a lot of psychological evaluations. And also they provide a speech and language consults. Those we can buy per year at a reduced rate if we buy more than two. So we usually buy three, you know, because we always use them. Very well-managed organization, REEDS. You have the opportunity to go to a budget presentation, um, on the REEDS budget. But because there's so many members, the executive director can't come to every school committee meeting. If you're satisfied that I have reviewed the budget and you've got a budget summary, you can vote to waive the, um, going to a REEDS budget presentation, which where they bring four or five districts in at once, over in, in, um, Middleburg.
And thoughts from the committee on that?
I mean, you're welcome to go, but.
Do you want to sit through another meeting?
So if this is waived, we can still go if we want to go?
Uh, yeah, sure, you can go. I, I think everybody, every other district has waived it, so it would be, it would be.
There's still options.
If you want to go?
It would be a singular.
Waive my option.
A night out? Absolutely.
Hey, when you have five kids, you might like that night out.
Okay, Callie, we can give you something else to do.
My list is growing.
So with that, I believe, uh, this is again guided us, we would like to do that as a group.
When is that meeting, Liz?
They haven't set a date because no one else is going. So if we.
So we would be the only one?
If we decide to go, then they will hold it for us, quite willingly. I'm not trying to get out of it, I'm just saying that no one else has voted to do this.
Well, maybe they can come to us then, yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion if everyone is, is set to, for the Carver School Committee to waive the opportunity to attend a REEDS budget presentation by authorizing. Yep, by authorizing the chair of the committee to sign the waiver.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none, it is unanimous.
So, um, so you know, I spend hours on these budgets with these collaboratives, hours and hours, because, and you need to know the other superintendents do too, because we really can't send them our money without knowing exactly where it's going, because none of us have any to send anywhere. So we want to make sure it very well serves our children. So, um, I will continue on the budget and personnel committee because that's where I think my time is best spent with them. So, um.
Does that move into, uh?
Personnel.
Personnel, yes.
So, um, we have a resignation from our speech and language pathologist, who's been with us for quite a while, but she commutes all the way from, um, near Worcester. And I think it's become, especially after this winter, too long a drive. These speech and language pathologists are rare diamonds and we have historically had a hard time being fully staffed because it's a very long process to become one. And the ones who are very qualified often take jobs at hospitals or other cons- consult organizations because the pay is so great. But then there's the advantage of schools, we do have some time off in the summer, so. But we are actively looking, we are signing up for consulting services from, um, some from REEDS, some from another organization, um, to get us through till the end of the year. Because she is actually gone this Friday.
This Friday, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Let anyone know a good speech pathologist is Tom, we are looking. You do?
But they all were in rehab.
Okay. Well, work in rehab, right. Okay, it's time of year where we look at our calendars and there are really very little difference. One gives off the Monday of, um, in December is the 23rd, Tuesday is the 24th and Wednesday is Christmas Day. And with that calendar, you would then go a half-day on Good Friday. We normally have the whole day off. With the second calendar, but people, we thought people could still go to church. Many districts don't give Good Friday off. I mean, it's been historical in Carver that we do. The other calendar, you, students and teachers go to school on the Monday, the 23rd in December and have the full day of Good Friday as a vacation day. So I have zero preference, I work these days usually anyway, so it's not to my advantage one way or the other. But, um, we are at a point in the school year where we need to plan for next year. And, um, something the school committee always considers is the calendar.
So Liz, where do these options come from then to do that? Was this through like teacher collaboration or is this administrative or?
We had a lot of teacher input. We had our curriculum team leaders looked at this calendar and their majority teachers and, um, and the administration. I also took it to another, um, the, another group of teachers and asked them to look at it. We're meeting around a different topic. The teachers all prefer the Monday.
I, you know, and that, that's kind of what I was looking at and I, I didn't know if maybe we could ask administration if there's been any kind of conversations, because, uh, would there be many teachers affected with the Good Friday having to come for the half a day where maybe their kids or, or somebody might be out of school? Where they may not?
It's about half and half.
Yeah.
Who will be affected on the Monday or who will be affected on, on the Friday? And people who have personal religious observations always get the day off anyway, you have a religious holiday. You know, so if it's a personal.
So this was a, they could use a, a personal day for this?
Well, a religious holiday day.
Okay.
For the Good Friday day, but not for the Monday before.
Right.
That shouldn't be much of a problem, services don't start till the afternoon anyway, too, on Good Friday, so.
Usually noon and all our children would be home by 11:45, so.
Well, it seems heating for the buildings too, not to, to, to moralize it all, but that's a, that's a big save to not have to turn the heat on for that one day in, on Monday.
Well, you can actually turn it down on Friday.
That's what I mean, so you wouldn't have to reheat the building back up for that one day and then pack for nothing.
This is the exact reason in another district that we went to, not this particular holiday, but in other models, because we could turn the heat off, you know, so. But, or not off, but down.
Well, I think too, uh, the key is we've learned through this recent winter is, um, the importance of starting before, um, the reedays, as we have done for quite some time. And I think that model needs to continue as giving us the extra room on the tail end. I think that's worked effectively and other than that, um, things seem to be as we've had it. Any other comments?
How do I separate like personal, like I, I don't know. I feel like we take, oh, I probably shouldn't go this route, but, my personal opinion is that we, everyone takes God out of everything and it's, it's, that's a real hard decision. So it is my last night at school committee, so I mean, do I abstain?
No, no, Callie, you, you get to.
But with your, huh?
Yeah.
But with your, your conscience.
Yeah, my conscience tells me that we take God away from too much, period. And that's a good day because on Good Friday, I mean, that, you know, would, depends on religious preference. I mean, I guess if people wanted to keep their kids home and, but that's a huge day of, I mean, some people are silenced at the moments that kids will be coming home on the bus. So. I don't know. I vote no for myself, but I'm not sure what to do for the school system, so.
Any other thoughts? That is a difficult, difficult role we have in school committee.
Right, I still say amen after the Pledge of Allegiance, but.
I'd prefer option one for multiple reasons. I think it just works better and it flows better.
So, uh, I, I prefer option one. I mean, I see Callie's point, but I think that those parents that feel that strongly about it just keep their kids home that day and the district doesn't lose a day. about it just keep their kids home that day, and the district doesn't lose a day. I have to agree with James on the heating thing, so, yeah, for a variety of reasons, I prefer option one. And happy to make a motion unless there's more discussion on it.
Well, you know, economically, it makes more sense for option one, but I do completely agree with you on option two. The only thing I would attest to that, being in a classroom, is, you know, when we had Good Friday off, I would probably say 75% of the kids had no idea why or what that was for. And I wouldn't demean that in any way myself, but I think that, you know, we have to look at our, I've had a tough time with this, out of all of that, trying to decide which was right that way. I didn't really see much of a need to change that. But in looking at it and listening to everybody, I, you know, I think it's still really a tough decision when you're looking at it morally that way, as to where it should be as opposed to what we want it to be.
I know. Or what, logically where it should be for the school system compared to... I just think we, personally, I just feel like we move more and more away from those morals and ups. That's a personal opinion, though.
Thank you, Kelly. With that, do we have a motion?
So, I will make a motion to approve calendar option one, keeping school closed Monday, December 23rd, and having an early release day on Good Friday, April 18th, for the 2013-2014 year.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we go to a vote?
Lastly, just to validate that calendar option one lists April and November and December as 2013. April, I'm assuming that's going to be 2014.
Oh, yeah. We're just cutting and pasting.
I understand, but just wanted to make certain.
Thank you.
Did the days, did the days change? So, in other words, is the 18th no longer a Friday on the 14th, on the 2014 calendar?
I believe April 1st was a Monday this year, so that should be correct.
The days are correct. I've checked that, but I did not, I did not see the rest of them say the right date.
Yep.
We just didn't change the header.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Good point.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
No.
Any abstain? We have four to one. It is approved for option one on the calendar.
And now, Meredith Cargill, our Director of Curriculum Construction and Technology, is going to give us an overview of our grants for this calendar of fiscal year.
Thank you. So, Liz asked me to put together an overview of incoming grants and to show you and the viewing public how the allocation is dispersed, and then to share a little bit about what each of those grants can be used for and what sort of criterion we need to make sure that we work within. So, if you look at the first Wheel of Fortune, you'll notice that grant funding sources can be basically categorized into five different areas for money coming into Carver Public Schools. And heading from kind of the 1 o'clock section and going clockwise, we have entitlement grants, competitive grants, special education grants, stimulus grant money, and then lastly, some private grants. So, we'll go through each of these in a little more detail, and I can explain more about them. Thank you. Okay. So, with entitlement grants, these are grants that are provided from the federal government, and money is given to SEAs or state education authorities. And from there, they are required to respond to federal guidelines in how they work out the formula and allocate how much money goes to each district. There are a variety of different factors that weigh into that formula. Sometimes it has to do with the percentage of students that are on free and reduced lunch. Sometimes it has to do with the number of students that have not passed the MCAS or have not made proficiency in the MCAS. And so, there are a bunch of different things that kind of weigh into how these formulas are derived. What we are able to do as a school district is go into the state website and look at our allocation, and then apply for these entitlement grants with a series of assurances. So, they will tell us that there are certain things that you have to use it for, and certain attendance records that you have to follow through with, and certain aspects that you need to make sure that you do for parental outreach. And we sign off on assurances, saying, yes, we'll do these. And then, we actually go through and catalog the fact that we have, we've done those. So, that is what entitlement grants are, and this money is kind of promised to us, providing we live within the allocation and we follow the rules. And again, with these rules, there are certain things that you can and can't use it for. Sometimes it's personnel, sometimes it's related solely to professional development. And I'll give you some examples of that in just a minute. The next type of grant is competitive grants, and you'll notice that there is some labeling that's very similar. And that's because this is from the same pot of money that is allocated to Massachusetts from the federal government. The distinction is that with entitlement grants, there is a set figure that Carver would receive. With competitive grants, there is some leftover money that the state hangs on to and says, we want districts to compete for this. So, you can see that Carver was able to get an additional $82,512 from Title I and Title II for this current year. The next section is special education grants. Again, these are governed by the state, and so Liz and our Director of Special Education, Karen Tigert, work within these grants for a variety of different special ed improvements. And you can see that that's just over half a million dollars this year.
And is that, I don't know if I missed it, is that also from the federal government down to the state?
Yes. Thank you. The next set of grants are stimulus grants. So, before, when Patrick was talking about the ed jobs money that will not appear next year, the allocation that we received this year of $150,073 won't be available. So, that was part of that era, era, which I've been dying to say ever since you said that. So, thank you for coining that term. And then, we're very fortunate in Carver to also have private grants available to us through the Make Peace Center. And this year, we've received $13,000 to promote literacy and professional development best practices, which have really helped with a lot of the initiatives that we're trying to carry out in our district improvement plan. So, you can see that with these different areas, we have received about a million dollars in grant money and have been fortunate to do so through these different categories. And I wanted to show you some examples of how that money is used. So, the first thing that we look at is our professional development needs. And then, under that umbrella, sometimes there is a requirement to do some curriculum work. So, we've talked a lot about the Common Core and the fact that there are significant shifts in English Language Arts and math, not only in those content areas, but in integrating that across the curriculum. And some of these grant monies are used by teachers during non-contracted work time. So, during the summer, or Saturdays, or during vacation, where they get together in teams and work on a variety of different curriculum projects in order to move forward the content and the practices in those changed areas. We also, as I mentioned before, use some of that money for special education, again, working within the parameters that are set federally. We look at how to serve at-risk populations. So, if students need additional support because they are not performing at grade level or they are not performing well in the MCAS, we certainly try to dedicate some tutoring services and some extra money to support those students so that the intervention necessary can occur. And then, we also work on using money to receive professional development around initiating professional learning communities. And we've talked a little bit about this this year, but this is where grade-level teams and department teams can really look at student data and be able to respond to what the prioritized instructional needs are. So, if they notice that as a grade level, that students do better on geometry and maybe do less well on algebraic operations, they're able to spend some time edifying that and working together. And so, we wanted to train our teachers and our teacher leaders how to do that. And then, obviously, to continue the work of the school and the district improvement goals. So, just as a refresher, you've seen this slide before in our MCAS presentation. But as a reminder, there's kind of this cyclical nature to how we steer improvement. And we have the student data piece where we're kind of continually collecting information, both in kind of annual events like MCAS and then on an ongoing basis, that signifies what our strengths and then areas that we can kind of bolster are. And we take those areas that need a little support and dedicate time, either through our professional learning communities and professional development, or through a change in classroom implementation. And then, we assess and we say, did this work? And do we have some actual evidence that says that this new teaching, this new practice, or this changed implementation is really helping our students? And that's the student data piece, and we keep going around and around. And as you know from the MCAS data, we are significant, or this practice has been significant in the sense that we've shown more growth than any other district in the South Shore on MCAS, and you can see the benefit of that cycle and that causal loop. So, some examples of projects when it comes to priorities. We've talked about curriculum work, and this year, we've tried to focus a lot on math and science. It doesn't mean that other content areas have been deprioritized, but we really wanted to make sure that we were mindful about how we were moving forward with math and science. So, a new set of national science standards called Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS, are coming out, and that will be a change for all of our elementary classroom teachers, as well as our science department and other integrated areas in our middle high school. And just like the Common Core, there's a requirement that there's some change content at each grade band, but additionally, that there are practices that are really important for students to obtain in order to be competitive when they leave high school and be able to either go into a career or get into colleges that are math and science focused. We also talked at the middle school level about the importance of looking at this increased rigor because of the Common Core, recognizing that students need to be by ninth grade at a more advanced level than we've ever asked them to be before. We recognize that there's some curriculum work that goes around that to make sure that our teachers and department chair and administrators have a nimble awareness of what those expectations are. And then, to really make sure that we continue to look at differentiation, not only at the middle school level, but in elementary school as well. And fourth grade, right now, has a number of classrooms that are piloting a workshop model where they take everyday math, and they really have a way of differentiating within the classroom that so far is showing some positive gains. And then, with the next slide, in addition to all of these curricular changes, we know that MCAS, so the metric that we use right now to measure how our students are doing will be changing in the next couple of years. And at this point, Massachusetts is a state that has bought into something called the PARC, and I'll be talking more about this as time goes on and we receive more clarity from the state. But the PARC assessment will be one that is done with 22 other states, and it's an online assessment, you know that piece of it, but it really is used to measure that new content in ways that we haven't been able to measure in the past. So, some of that has to do with the rigor of the question, some of it has to do with the layering of the question, so harder questions that require multiple steps. And all of those things are going to require a fair amount of understanding and work around how to support students in those type of environments prior to actually taking the test. So, that is how we've been using the discretionary aspects of the grant money, again, working within the parameters that were given from the feds and from the state. And I'd like to open it up to any questions anybody has.
Comments from the school committee?
Who does the majority of the grant writing? Is it just dispersed throughout, or is it you and Liz?
Yeah, it's Liz.
Okay, Liz?
Yeah, so...
Thanks again, Liz.
Yeah, and it's been great. There's a little bit...
Well, that, but Meredith and Ruby and Paula, and, you know, we all work on it as a team, you know? The truth is, you know, usually I push the final product and Karen, but it's a team effort. They give me credit, but they're really working on it.
It's Liz. It is, it's, I actually, coming here from a different district where I had to deal a lot with grants, I really value the process that we use, because it is collaborative. And even though the minutia of writing it falls on one person's lap, it's nice to make sure that input is sought from all layers of the organization, and that's appreciated. Thanks.
I do like writing grants, because even the ones you don't get, because you, the moment you get the yes on that, it's just like, it's like a touchdown. Yes, we got that one. So, I do enjoy it. It's personally rewarding. It's free money, kind of.
The, the new science standards that are coming out are much more technological and engineering based and much more, you know, research and development. Are we preparing for the shifts, not just in the teacher training, but as far as materials and things that we're going to need for that, because it is going to be a big shift in content, particularly in science?
It's a very big shift in content, and they had the draft ones out in January, as you know, and so, we're sort of, before we start preparing the teachers, I'm waiting for the finals, so I don't prepare them for one thing, and then they change drastically another. But we have a middle high school curriculum project to be, actually, we're going to work over April vacation, and their primary goal is to map to the new standards. So, some of that work's going to come, and then, we'll work backwards from there to the elementary school to see what we need to do. We have a very good tech ed program at the middle high school, which uses all the tools and technology.
It's the elementary, I think, where the, where the big shift is going to have more of an impact, because I think it's a very different base that they're putting forth from where it was before.
Yeah. We, we switched to a more problem-solving curriculum two years ago, and our score is improved by 50%.
Yeah, there's some nice things that have been happening over that.
Yeah, so, I believe in the case of our elementary school, it's going to be tweaking rather than totally new.
Re-mapping.
But we did want to start with the middle and high school, because want to figure out what they've got to do to prepare them to be ready to do that there, too. So, but yes, it's a big job, and of course, we have no other jobs to do. We have to prepare for the Common Core, and we have to introduce, you know, get ready for the new teacher evaluation system. It's, it is a lot at once, I'm telling you, and it's a lot on teachers' plates. Thank goodness for these grants, or we wouldn't be able to do the preparation that we are doing. We will probably have a math academy this summer that will help with the Common Core. So, that's, you're right, though, it's a lot.
Well, and I know, Liz, that you are a very large Chicago math fan, and I am clearly not, and worked in a lot of situations where that is. And I know that there's some evidence that some is working well, but in all the talk that I've had with parents, with teachers, with kids, everyday math is clearly not focused on mastery standards in the way that the Core is focused on mastery standards. And speaking from a personal perspective, when my second grader's coming home and her math homework is, is algebra and fractions, and the reliance upon her memorizing her math facts is extra math sent at home instead of work that she's doing in school, I have concerns with the way that it's going. I know a lot of parents are confused with what they call the new math, when a lot of what the Core is looking for is traditional methods and moving back in that mastery, unit-based understanding. And I know that the representatives of everyday math have made it very clear that they don't really care about that, and they'll continue with their program the way they're going to. And it doesn't necessarily, I know there's a lot of crossover work, but it doesn't match very well to where the Core is going.
I heard all these concerns from other superintendents, other curriculum people, and from you. And so, we hosted an everyday math seminar with the most well-trained, most experienced everyday math professional developer in the country. And she was here all day on Friday with 35 people from various districts and walked everyone through the alignment, and it is, well, we just disagree, but it is a mastery curriculum, but it just does it in a different way than we're used to.
It's, it's a philosophy. It's a spiral philosophy. And I understand that you're saying it's different than what we're used to, but everyday math is set up so there's over 160 lessons. You don't have a lag day. So, what this, what this program does is regardless of whether a student understands the concept or not, they automatically move on to the next lesson.
But they revisit every topic.
But that, that topic is not revisited in a mastery sense. It's only revisited as an introduction in a math box or in another slight situation. So, these children, and from the parents that I talked to, and from what I see, are not really grasping the ideas of base 10. They're not getting these foundational skills that they need, because in first grade and kindergarten, they're doing fractions and, and, you know, division and things that are way beyond their, their cope of understanding, because it's introduced... beyond their cope of understanding because it's introduced to them so that it will come back around later on. But the problem is, it's not a teaching moment every time. And often you have to take that teaching moment and you lose the moment that's there. One day you do one thing from a teacher's perspective, one day you're working on one thing, the next day you're working on something completely different.
Well, the curriculum decisions here aren't made by me. They're made by teachers. And seven years ago, the teachers picked the Everyday Math curriculum over other research-based programs. And we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on professional development and on materials and supplies. And we will buy the official Common Core Everyday Math when it comes out, but it won't be finished for another, about a year. So now we have the transition books. But the point in thing is that the teachers understand what's going on. And the other important fact is, seven years ago, we were in corrective action for mathematics in the district's K-8. And we are above all of our other districts in performance in math using the Everyday Math program. So the data speaks that it's working for our students.
I wonder if the teacher's perspective is still the same seven years later.
Well, you're welcome to talk to our math coach, but we let them choose. Paula was part of that. She was a teacher then. She can speak to that. They did a minimal pilot of different lessons from each one, and this is the one they chose in the beginning of the year. I remember some teachers were here who spoke very favorably of it. But it's not a school committee decision. This is a teacher's decision, and I've honored the teacher's decision. So the school committee, you're more than welcome to have your opinions, but we have to let the teachers decide what's best for the curriculum.
Well, that's what I'd like to clearly hear is that the teachers fully support this program because my daughter's teacher is your elementary math coach.
Mm-hmm.
And I would really like to clearly hear from the teachers that they fully support this program.
And she fully supports this program.
I would like to hear that from the teachers if that's acceptable at all. I think that it's not a school committee decision, but it is something that we should be aware of.
All right. Well, we'll take all that.
Then I would propose that, following this conversation, if we could get this on the agenda for next time and maybe have a few teachers, or if there's a way that we can maybe help. James has a little bit more insight than the rest of us on this topic and maybe help kind of educate all of us.
I think the first step would be James get together with a few teachers. I would like, glad they have a report by the teachers, but I don't want to start bringing curriculum decisions to the school committee because it's, we have to leave that to the teachers. We have to.
I agree, but isn't a piece of the policy, isn't curriculum sort of fall under that guideline? Curriculum is a policy, so to speak. It's what we're teaching our children.
It's not a policy, though.
Well, I'll speak as a school committee member and as a parent who's very interested in that.
Yeah, I'm glad to bring it to the school committee, but deciding which curriculum we use, it's the reason we pay the teachers to do their job is so they can pick the one they can do. And if they want to pick a different one, that's a whole different story. But right now, we don't have the budget, the materials, or the time to do a different. We haven't put that into the calculus for next year. Because when you do it, it's $150,000 in the adoption. I'm happy to bring the teachers here, but I don't want to make them feel like they're on trial for their choice, you know? You see what I'm saying? This is the choice they made. Meredith.
I was just going to add to that this year, the teachers and the lead teachers and administrators at the elementary school and in sixth grade at the middle high school have spent a lot of time working on a Common Core migration that does a number of things, one of which is to look at the alignment of Everyday Math and the Common Core. And we have a core group of teachers that have been going to Bridgewater State and giving up their evenings to attend the mathematical practices aspect of it. And I would be happy to present on that at any given time because the aggregate of work that has been done this year has been phenomenal and has really kind of increased the professional capacity of our whole organization in understanding the marriage between Everyday Math, the Common Core, and what delivery options exist.
Well, I wouldn't be, this isn't a, this isn't a personal agenda. This is done through conversations that I've had with a lot of people in the school building. This is not something that I'm bringing up on my own between parents that I've discussed and teachers that work in the building. So this is not something that's just offhand that I think I want to try and do and move forward with. This is something that I think is valid, and I think that we should be talking about and looking at. Because if you're saying that the teachers support this, I would really like to hear that from more than a handful of just a couple teachers who were involved in mapping this out. Because obviously with the time and energy that they're putting into it, they are going to support it because they're sinking their time and energy into it. But I'd like to make sure that this is a supported program that the district is willing to move forward with. Because I don't necessarily, from what I'm hearing from parents and from staff members and from my personal perspective, because unless you're mathematically minded, that spiral effect is a very difficult concept to understand because it does constantly move. And I watch many kids feel exactly like that as they're learning math, like they're getting lost in the process. And they don't really understand what they're doing. They feel like they're shown a lot of information but don't really learn the whole law.
Well, I'm happy to bring a team of people to make a presentation with Meredith. And I think I will include the sixth grade because we never thought the sixth grade would want to adopt Everyday Math. But after the huge change of events between getting the children who'd had the previous math program and getting the children who were on two or three years of the spiral of Everyday Math, they came to me and said, can we please have it for sixth grade? And I said, if you want it, you can have it. And so I think because the whole mastery event is targeted to finish at sixth grade, then, you know, we will continue. It's not just an elementary program. It goes K-6. And we'll put it on the agenda, but I just, I do want to say that we're happy to listen to all parents and their input on this, and they go do that through their teachers and through the school committee. But it's a slippery slope if we take this curriculum decision-making away from the teachers. They have to teach it. We have, I have to support that. That's what's, that's how it's always happened.
Well, and I think that's to James's point, if our understanding is, if teachers are in support of it, then I think that sort of validates one way or another for, from what I'm hearing from you, James?
Yeah, I'd have to say that we'd be pretty hard-pressed to get a couple teachers come up here and say that they don't like the math program. So I don't really know where we'd be going with that aspect, but, you know, I think it is-
That's why I think you should, we can arrange for you to talk to teachers, too, that's not in front of the school committee. I thought that would be more effective anyway.
Hmm.
So how about we work on setting that up?
True.
And I think that's probably a better form for that.
Sure. True.
Thank you. Thank you, Meredith.
I just have a follow-up question while we're still on math. On the pilot program for fourth grade right now, who made that kind of choice or decision? Is that something that, you know, another district is doing or somebody brainstormed? And then if it's looking good so far for fourth grade, what's the plan to roll it out to other grades?
So that's a great question. It's not just fourth grade, but that was an area that we were focusing on based on MCAS scores. So there are other teachers that have opted to do it. At this point, it's all been teacher-generated. So our math coach, Jen Kelly, shared some resources with teachers. And then additionally, myself and Karen Tykert and Ruby, Paula, and Zach Wadaker met with teachers who were interested in it and tried to make sure that they would know that they were supported through it. And then we're going to look at data that comes out of this year's MCAS and not just the kind of internal assessments that we're using. And from there, we'll determine what the next steps are because we need time for kind of a wide-scale program evaluation.
But right now, only certain classrooms at each grade level are opting to do it based on the teacher who chooses.
Yeah, if the teacher wanted to do it, then we supported them and gave them some coaching and some strategies, so.
Is there any insight to that?
Thank you.
Yes, it's called the workshop model for a way of organizing your classroom in mathematics. And we hired a teacher, a very experienced teacher from Plymouth, who was very enthusiastic about the workshop model. And she's a fourth grade teacher. And that's where the request came from, is her personal good experience with this model. And there are other, there is another pilot at fifth grade as well. They decided to group their students a little differently. And the administration, math people, said, sure, try it. And they had wonderful results. And so they're on their second year of their regrouping strategy, and we'll look at that data as well. But the teachers are constantly revisiting their practice to make sure that they're getting the results that they feel that they should. And we try to support them as best we can because they're actually the experts in doing this, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on the grant portion of our agenda?
Thanks, Meredith. So the next thing is the submission of the statement of interest. And so I included for your review the pieces that seemed like, if you wanted to talk about, these were things that would take us forward from actually submission to the next steps, which, you know, we clearly aren't ready to go to the next steps yet because we haven't heard anything back. But they are the next steps.
Can you just remind me, when are we expected to hear back from them?
Well, you know, the first time we sent it in, we didn't hear back until July. But in conversations with the MSBA, it's, they're doing it slightly different now. It's a rolling response. So they will get together after Wednesday, which is the deadline. And they will rate the different project as the ones that need first attention. And so we could hear back earlier after that. But we won't know anything until they call us, you know, basically, you know, just it's a wait-and-see right now. Is there any?
Any other comments regarding the statement of interest?
Liz, this second part that says next step, that's highlighted in colors here, the last page there?
Possible next steps?
No, the one that says next steps, target date, May 2013.
This one? Yes, that one, next possible.
Is that something from the MSBA or is this-
No, no, I just, you know, we have been brainstorming. Actually, it's with, you know, Rick Lefont and Pat and I, what, you know, what would be possible next steps? And there are only so many choices. So there really isn't a lot of, you know, a lot at Leeway. So we, I just put it on paper. So one thing that's clear that you have, we do have to form a new Carver Elementary School Building Committee, and then there are guidelines about, and I put those next, you know, on the next page, on what that's made up of. This is in the law, so you have to have the chair of the board of selectmen or his or her designee, the chair of the school committee or his or her designee, somebody in town that's in the building trades sort of thing, myself, the school principal, parents, teachers, finance people. They suggest you have someone from the finance committee. So that would be the first next step, no matter what we do, is to form an official building committee. And then after that, MSBA will tell us what to do, you know? It's clear that we would have to start over with feasibility and schematic design, but starting over could include the choice to go from where we started, we left off before. Or we can choose to start over with a totally clean slate and go from there. We had three options that we ended up with. We could start over considering the three options. We could start over with a clean slate. We could start over with B3, which was our final option. We could consider a model school, but the largest model school is built for about 700 students, and everything we'd have to add on for that would be at our cost, not, so they offer you the model school, but you, anything you change on the model school has to be at our own cost. And then review the previous feasibility and continue with one of the other two options, H or J. One was a brand-new school on any site, and one was knocking down the Governor John and building onto the back building. B, that was J. B3 was joining the two buildings and using the usable steel and what structures from those with new construction in between. So there's, we can choose where to start, but that will be, you know, be from the building committee, the, once they're pointed, then they will work with the community and figure out where they want to start.
I hear that, but I think, you know, I think everybody here, as well as well beyond us, really want to see this work this time and really want to see this happen. And I think as a, as a board, which I'm glad to see the members will be here next meeting here also, because I was hoping not to get into too much discussion as much will change next month. But I think as a board, we really need to reach out to the community, not in the same way, obviously, it's not like you didn't last time, but there's, there's serious resistance in this town, especially moving forward the same way. Now, we talk a lot about clear language and new projects, and I know that at the, the meeting on the 22nd at the high school, it was stated that we would need a non-binding on the ballot in order to move forward, and that was not accurate. We clarified that. And now again, I think-
It was accurate from what they told me, but then they backed off of it.
Exactly, Liz, to that extent. You know, at the selectmen's meeting, you had read something that was how we're not going to be refunded for the feasibility study, and that was a letter to Jack Angley in 2011. And I would prefer, as a committee, that if we're moving forward, that I don't want to hear any letters from the past, from the, from the MSBA. I would rather hear something current and updated. And even if it says the same thing, I want it to be dated 2013. I want to know that the communications that we have are all current and moving forward. And we're not looking backwards and using something from the past to move forward. That doesn't mean that we can't use smart choices from the other programs, from the other feasibility, if it works out that way. But I think that as a committee, we need to really try hard to include others in this process a lot more and really involve other committees in this town. I know that you're saying there's an MSB, MSBA regulations, and here's the process, but I also know that towns like Rochester have done it their way, and towns like Rockland, and not that we want to copy their school if you drive by it in any way, but they did it their way. And there are a lot of towns out there, Abington, who included a senior center in their program. So they really got that vote from the seniors to move the project forward. I think that this town has proven that you have to be creative thinkers and you have to work together. And I think that a lot of people in this town see the school committee as a separate entity and not part of what's happening. And I think we need to change that perspective with the whole solar issue that's going on, showing that when we're having sides here, it doesn't work. We're not moving forward. We need to make this community feel like we are willing to work and compromise and come in to play with them because it's really the funding that's going to be the final factor here. And we need to find a way to work with the community and show them that we're working with them to find a way to fund this. We don't have to wait for the MSBA to talk about funding and to work with other committees and to talk to other people without knowing exactly what plan we're going to use because it comes down to the money, doesn't it?
I agree with everything you said, Jim. I think it's great. I think that everything does have to start anew, as it's been said multiple times. And I think that a fresh start will absolutely help generate more support in a unified front, as I've said, till I'm blue in the face.
It's got to be because, you know, obviously, what happened before, if we go through that same process, and even if we change a little here and there, we're going to end up with the same result. And we cannot focus towards a cohort in this town. One cohort is not, is not this town. This town is filled with many cohorts, and we can't rely on one to be the decision-maker. We need to diversify what we do as a committee to really start working with that town.
Sure. I mean, you just shared a lot there. Clearly, our town is divided. We have a lot of cohorts, as you put it. There are a lot of groups in town with agendas, and we understand that. We're, and like you said, this board really needs to help bring everything together. I mean, clearly, we've got an end game, and that's the importance of a proper facility for our students to learn. Clearly, it's not there. So how do we get there? And to your point, we do need to talk finances, but there are some, if the MSBA, once they decide, they're going to help guide us towards some of that. Like you said, they may say, hey, we are going to reimburse you this time. So for us to get ahead of the game and start to make decisions based on that, we don't know yet. So I think getting too far ahead- So I think getting too far ahead, to your point, yeah, we're going to have to have the financial conversation, but we also, there are steps to go. And I think we've got to wait for some of those to take place to continue that conversation, at least for the end game. We can always have the conversation. And I think the conversation will continue as far as how is, how is this going to get paid? Absolutely. But I think some of the nuts and bolts of where we need to be, MSBA is going to drive some of that.
Sure. And there's finite regulations, but the MSBA, the MSBA is in a partnership with us. They're not making our decisions.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think Rochester, Rockland, a lot of other communities have proven that the MSBA will work with you when you move forward that way. We need to do what is best for us, and that's not us, that's our community.
Oh, absolutely.
And in order to do that, we really need to listen and work with them. And I don't, I've been on this committee for a year, and I'll tell you one thing, this was never off my radar, and I would like to see this move forward, because I think this should be on our radar all the time.
Sure.
In fact, I believe that something about this should be on every agenda until we start moving forward. So it opens up the possibility for anybody who wants to come in and talk about this and do something to move forward, has that opportunity. We should never let go of this right now. If this is sincere and we want to move forward with this, we got to let the community know that we're sincere in what we're doing and not just trying to push again, push ahead again. Because I tell you, there's a big perspective out there, and that's what it is.
And Jim, just so you know, in the past, there was a small piece in every agenda. And we talked about it all along the way. Apparently, nobody watches these meetings. You know, then at the end, you know, you hit the big stone walls, you know.
And all the building committees were publicized and televised.
We were televised on the building committee as well. But, but so, I agree, and that will be on the agenda in the future. I'm sure it'll be there, just like it has in the past.
Well, I had to request for it tonight, so I just wanted to-
But more importantly, I think your point of it being anew is absolutely paramount. I think that that's imperative, that you start afresh.
I mean, we know that, we have to look in, at this community, at the needs of the whole community. And there's a lot of talk about the fire department, and the police department, the EMT, and, and a senior center. And I think we really need to find a way that pulls this community together, that looks at, okay, this isn't just about us, this is about the whole community. Obviously, hopefully, everybody's holding our children paramount in importance, because that's why we're here, and that's what we're all doing. But this is a community decision, and in order to make this happen, it's got to be done the right way. It really has. I know that the town has a building committee that hasn't looking, isn't looking just at this, but they're already moving forward. They've been meeting quite a bit. We have no idea what they're doing or what contact, you know, we haven't even offered them a chance to speak to them, to at least hear.
That's a building study committee.
Right.
There's a big difference between a building committee and a study committee.
And I don't mean the building committee particularly for the school, but what the building study committee in town is looking at is all the things, all the options and things that are needed within this town.
Correct, correct. And what the impact financially of that will be.
So in order for us to truly know what we should be doing to move forward as a committee, we should be also communicating with that committee to see what the other needs are in the town, to know that, you know, this is, it's not like the school is the only thing this town needs. Is it paramount? It should be.
Is it appropriate for you, James, legally, procedurally, is it appropriate for someone on this committee to go as a resident and attend those building study committee meetings? And could you be our liaison to talk to us at each meeting, if this is going to be on the agenda, and bridge that? If you're looking to do it differently, that's something we didn't do before.
Yeah.
I would throw that out as a possible consideration, if we're allowed to do that. And I would like to hear from you. I'm familiar with Rockland very, and I'm familiar with Plymouth. I'm not as familiar with Rochester. I would love for you to share with me what specifically they're doing differently, or what is their way that maybe we could emulate or talk to them? Because I've talked to Rockland, and we talked to, who else did we talk to? What other town? I forget.
Rochester.
Rochester.
We did talk, you did talk to Rochester?
And Vanover, too.
So I don't, I would like to know, we have talked to numerous towns who've done it their way, and we've gotten some great ideas. And some we were able to do, and some we weren't, because we were trying to meet deadlines and, you know, now we have a little more time. I think we're trying in some ways, correct me if I'm wrong, to slow it down a little and do it right. So running ahead again might, and I'm not saying you're saying we run ahead.
Definitely not.
No, well said, well said.
But I think, I think what we need to do is take our time to communicate effectively and brainstorm and, you know, so I know I just threw a lot back at you, but-
Now, when you said the committee, did you mean the building study committee?
The building study committee.
Building study committee was created by the selectmen, and those people are appointed to that board by the Board of Selectmen.
But the public can attend, can they not?
All of their meetings are open, public meetings, like any other committee.
So could you attend that and be our school committee liaison to report back to us?
Well, I have no problem with that, because I, you know, my point isn't, isn't to the, I mean, I think that as a committee, that, that's, you know, like you said, you would talk to Rockland, and that was the previous time, and to other, other districts. And I think that's really the key, that we really need to make sure, because it is different this time. Everything is different this time. There's a lot that's different this time. And I really want to see this move forward in a way that it's going to succeed.
Well, can I just say, I mean, it is different, because every new experience is different. But I think what, I don't know, maybe what Paula was saying is that before, we did a lot of communication with people, and we extended a lot of invitations to come and, and hear us and join us, and it just, some people did, some people didn't. So I guess we, we did that approach last time. I think the difference this time might be it's just more, people are more, more people are aware of it. But it's still a good idea to start over. I mean, I'm the big advocate for joining sides and unifying and going forward and all that. But hopefully, this time, these sides want to unify and join together. That's the big question, because for a lot of people, I personally invited a lot of people last time. We basically were begging people, if you don't agree and you want to learn information, please come and, and listen. I mean, I had just heard a comment the other day that someone was interested in considering joining the buildings, and I kind of was like, that was an option. But people hear what they want to hear.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe hopefully this time, people are going to hear, everyone will open their ears and their eyes together and hear and see.
I don't think it's their ears and their eyes that's the problem. I think it's their wallets.
Yeah, well, that's a-
Well, that's what it boils down to. And it's, it's not in us versus them. We are the community. We are the community. I pay taxes just like everybody else. There is no division to me. This is a matter of when, how people understand finance. I know that one of the things that, I, I'm not a finance person. My, my background and my strengths are not finance, municipal finance. That's not my strength. So we had Clark Rowley come in from Unibank, who's a municipal banking expert, and he said, yes. I felt like I was watching Law and Order, you know, where this poor man was, was spoken to at the Board of Selectmen's meeting by people who were quote-unquote opponents or, and, and not opponents. Some of the, the building study committee, I believe, if my recollection is right, you know, said, aha, so you are saying it is possible? And he's saying, well, yes, it is possible, but it's not advisable. And that's the nuance, James. Some people say, but it's possible, we need to do it. I'm absolutely open to getting creative and doing things, you know, sharing a small personal story. I wanted a wedding at a mansion in Newport, I couldn't afford it. So I had a wedding at a mansion in Portsmouth. It was a Friday night instead of a Saturday, and I had to barter for my flowers. I get creative. I roll up the sleeves, I get stuff done. I'm willing to do that for this town. I want to use my creativity and my passion for this town. But when you put yourself out there and you put out, you ask people for the input, what other ideas do you want? How about you get involved? Certain people can't carry all the weight. You get to a point where, when people are, all they're doing is, is throwing bombs at you, and nobody's stepping up, and nobody's coming when you invite them, or it's the same core five people, or it's the same people saying, he said you could do it, yes, but he also said it's not advisable. When I listen to an expert in municipal banking, because I am not, tell me it's not advisable, I'm not voting for it. And we got, I felt, my personal feeling is, we got dinged for that. So, you know, I am right there with you, brother. I want everybody to unify.
See it happen, right.
I want to do it differently, but what's different? If you have a solid idea of what you can suggest to make it different, to get creative, bring it. And let's get other people involved, if you have a way to do it. But it's been a challenge for us. It really has. And it's not us them. It's, I am them.
Right.
I am in a tough financial position. I don't, I'm not working. I've been trying to get back to work for nine months. But I know what my priorities are, and I know when the state government says, I'm going to give you 50% to build the school, or you can pay 100 later, hi, I'll take the 50 now. How do you, how do you make people understand that? They just don't want to do it. You can't force the teachers to pay for it. So we've got to, if you have solid, creative ideas, if, if you-
You know, I'm not up here individualizing anything, looking for me to come up with all the ideas, so, you know, I hear what you're saying, but-
No, no, no. I'm just asking you as a newcomer, who's saying you want it different. What else do you think we missed?
Paul, if I can interject, if I can interject, I think it's important that, as a committee, we do, we practice what we preach. We're trying to move forward. So I think our rhetoric needs to remain forward-focused rather than back-focused.
Right.
And I think it's important that, as a committee, we're going to have to come together, because even, and I appreciate where you're coming from, James, and we want to work with every group in town, but we've been elected, the five of us have been elected, to support the, the needs of the kids in this community. That's our focus, that's why we were elected, to help that purpose. Does it make sense? Do we need to work as a community? Absolutely. And I think with that in mind, we need to do that, because we all know this project isn't going anywhere without the, the community's support. And we talk about community as a whole, because we are all a part of that community. So we're no different. Do we want to see our taxes raised? Of course not. But it's about priorities and what the, the, the school system and the government in this town is here for. And I think, I think most people in this community feel it's important to educate the, the youth of this community and to have a proper place to do that. So clearly, we, we know they're behind that, and again, we know it's about the dollars. So I think it's going to take some, some great minds, like Paula. It's going to take minds like the gentleman we had, and some new financial minds to really help make that work, where we understand, we can all sit here in this room and, and build the facility that we need for the schools in a proper education. I think that's where our strengths are. But we're going to need to work with those in the community that have the fiscal knowledge of going to help work the municipal budget, so to speak, and really make that happen.
And keep in mind that the building study committee has been re-energized, and they've got a new mission. So they're already working on the financial impacts for the community. And once those, there's a report that Steve and Dan are creating. And once that report is done, a lot of the people whose mind is already made up and they don't want to hear the facts, will then have a new vision, a new look, and their defense mechanisms will automatically be lowered, in my opinion. From the people that I've spoken to who were opposed to it from the get-go, just because they didn't want to pay for it, they couldn't afford it, and times are tough. When Dan and Steve, and that committee is done, I think it will, it'll alleviate some of the unknowns, and people will be more willing to move forward to it. And I embrace it. I'm looking forward to getting involved in that particular project again. I mean, it's, it's, it's important, and I believe that it's going to work.
Well, and to your point too, James, I think, I mean, we look at the Plymouth model of the, the high school and the, and the senior center. I think there's a lot of opportunities. When we're dealing with a small community like ours, we have to get creative with our facilities, because you're not building a lot of them.
Right.
So I think it is important to look at all options, and that's, that's a piece of what we need to do, absolutely.
And Plymouth residents just got hit with gigantic tax increases also, so, very big. Yes, they did, exactly. And to that context, I mean, I think, and I'm saying this because as a community, I think there needs to be sort of a shift towards that, because there's a community development plan, and nowhere in that plan at all does it even talk about new buildings and the needs for that.
In, in the master plan?
In the, in the, in the community development plan that was updated from the master plan in 2013.
The master plan addressed that.
In 2001.
Yes, right. And that was a 15, that was a 15 to 20-year plan.
It was updated in 2010, the master plan.
Right.
And, and has been revisited in 2013.
Can I just say one thing about, we can, a lot of towns and schools add different pieces of their school to entice the public, to support it, and to serve the public needs. Whitman Hansen put in a 24/7 fitness center and a track above their gym, and people have a pass card, and, you know, they man it 24 hours, too, to make sure it's all good. Plymouth voted a very large debt exclusion, which included the senior center, but it was not reimbursed by MSBA, because, and it was a big struggle to get that, because they had the same construction crews working on both, but they worked it out. There are a lot of things that can be done. Actually, Rockland, their solution was the same as our solution was at the same time. We were in the same cohort going through. And theirs was to replace two decrepit buildings with one that combined both buildings. So they, rather than have a junior high or a middle school and a high school, they built a middle high school, same as we were combining the Carver Elementary School into one building. So that was their creative, and they were accepted by MSBA. And, and we were accepted by MSBA for the one-building solution for the two-building problem, because they simply couldn't choose which was worse over there. So there's a lot of ways to do this. I helped build a school in another community where we built a community room on the building, but that's totally was at the expense of the town, because MSBA, they're not investing in our communities beyond the children, that's the thing. So there's a lot of creative ways. And we, you know, Kevin worked really hard as building chairperson to bring in as many people as we could. And to their credits, Steve Pratt and Dan Ryan came to 90% of our meetings, and, you know, and they were on the building study committee at the time. And the only, the only reason I did not put it on this time, because we have no real things to discuss yet. We don't have a project, we don't have any parameters for the project, we don't even know we're going to get a project. So the planning now needs to be done at the town level on funding, financing, timing, which we could have an input, but we can't be making decisions for the town.
Well, I'm not looking to make any decisions, but I think it's that input that shows our cooperation, I guess, that I'm talking about, that, that sort of instills to people that we're willing to work and listen to them, and, and just a show of faith that we are committed to this, not just as an entity, but as a community. And I guess that's all I'm referring to. And I disagree, because I, from my perspective, this conversation was very good. And I think just talking about it and bringing it out is very helpful, to know that we're working towards this end goal and discussing these kind of things that way to, you know, I'll, I'll talk to them and start visiting and see what information I can get from them to bring that way. But I just think it's important that we continue to talk about this, regardless of where we can move right now, because it, you know, the, the more you discuss it, the better your plan becomes. And obviously, we're not looking to commit to anything right now. We can't, and that's clear in the legal sense. But as a community, there are ways to start to build support and to start to move forward right now. And I just didn't know if as a committee, there was anybody that had any good suggestions on ways to really start doing that, because I think it is something that we should really start with. This will take time, and we do have to do it slowly, but I think we have to do it right, and we got to make sure that we get this to work this time. Because all your efforts last time, and then add on to them this time, I would hate to see something not happen. Never mind from the committee, but for the kids themselves.
Sure. But that was a good discussion. Right?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you for your levity there and allowing that conversation to, I appreciate it.
Okay, ready to move on?
Let's move on.
Okay, so before this committee stops being total, it is. At the beginning of the year, I presented my goals, and you did my summative evaluation for the 2011/12 year. And now, when I presented my goals in, in October, and you accepted them, then at the midpoint, you have to do a mid-cycle review of me, on my goals and what progress I've made. And since, as a negotiations committee, we are leaning towards adopting the forms as they stand presently, and then working with them for a year to see if they work for us.
Is this a good example of that?
So I'm modeling that, so to speak. And so here are, so I do think I've made significant progress on each goal, but not on each goal, but not any one of them is yet complete, because we're not finished yet. So, you know, my first goal was to sustain the new education evaluation system, Common Core standards. I will collaborate with the team of administrators and team leaders to form professional learning communities and assist them support for students and teachers, so that teachers can focus on their work and implement best practices that ensure all students learn. It's measured by Common and Formed Assessments, and particularly the MCATs. So, to that end, we've had two major workshops for the lead teachers. We first negotiated lead teachers for the elementary teachers and department chairs, which we already had in the middle high school, on how to lead and sustain professional learning communities. One was a three-day workshop in the summer and fall of last year. And then, we have had a second one-day workshop in January, which we will continue this summer for three days with Kathy Spencer as our provider. And we've invited Donna to attend with us this summer. So, I think it will be valuable to work as a team with that. And then, I included for you the evaluations of the teachers and administrators who attended these workshops. And it's like I say, we're not finished. And then, we also try to model the professional learning community works. And what that means is, in business, you would call a professional learning community a team that you were working on to produce a product or finish a project, and you would collaborate with those people all involved in the same work. And that's what a professional learning community is. There can be a professional learning community of all social studies teachers, or it can be of all teachers who teach 7th grade or 3rd grade or whatever. But these people have all the responsibility. We're encouraging them to make team goals, to work together as a team, to accomplish the best practices for students. So, this isn't a new idea. It's just something in education that we've, they call them team learning, group learning, professional learning communities, professional learning teams. So, we are definitely far into making this work in Carver. And my second goal was to improve the capacity for teachers to improve outcome for students in order to improve, to improve by 5% for all students who struggle to meet proficiency. So, move students along the continuum, 5% who were either in needs improvement or warning, to, towards meeting the goal of proficiency. One of the ways we've measured this was through some interim math assessments that Meredith and all the math teachers used to figure out the effectiveness that we were using in all grade levels of doing some very specific differentiated math instructions, both within the workshop model and with some of the Title I learning. And you can pick any page, and you can see that there was great improvement in many grade levels by just implementing this specific workshop or differentiated instruction. And so, that was one, one target. We already have our intervention model in reading. We are fully implementing that through 8th grade. And so, and we also have an intervention model in the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade for math, where we call Math Plus. So, I just gave you some very good data that showed beginning, middle, and we'll have some end data at the end. But if you look at the data sheets, you see that some classrooms went from 30% to 75% being proficient on, under gold to the black and white graph sheet. But, so, what we're doing is working so far. We'll see what turns out at the end. My third goal was to look with the high school principal and to concurrent enrollment with Cape Cod Community College, to see if students could get credit in their junior or senior year or both for enrolling in college courses while at the high school and getting credit for the high school. We have had the initial meetings. They're coming next week to meet with kids and parents. I've written a grant to Makepeace to, for $8,000 to fund scholarships, so that the initial out, foray into this area, parents haven't had time to plan for it, but they could still enroll for next year. And then, after that, you know, Makepeace usually funds things once. So, they probably have to work to fund their own tuition. But I believe after successful once, if students get a taste of the college atmosphere, they could graduate with as many as three credits a semester from Carver High School. And for children who would then choose to go to a community college or state school, they could enter as a second semester freshman their first year or up. And if they went in the summer, too, they could also enter college as a sophomore, which would save families a huge amount of money, not to mention the educational opportunities for the children. So, that is well underway, and the community college is very excited about it.
Are you looking at a timeline for the first course?
Yeah, they'll be in the fall. Yeah. So, this is what they're-
Used for the spring semester?
Yeah.
Nice.
They have some, I think Born and Sandwich has a few kids in right now. But we're talking about a cohort of about 20 to 30 students. So, kids can also go there on their own, or we could host a course here in Carver. So-
And does this, this will help us, because we have some limitations right now on the options we can offer our kids. So, this will give us more options for those kids.
I can't believe the amount of children who wanna take forensics. You know, it's all the law and order system.
Right. CSI.
And it's offered as a science course, as chemistry, and so, they can enroll in a forensics course. Or we can bring it here. If we get 20 students to enroll, they would offer it here and furnish the professor.
Wow.
It's $500 a course, and the requirements are you be 16, you pass the entrance exam, which is something we offer anyway for all students headed to community college out of our guidance department, and that you have a B or better average to enroll. So, it's a great opportunity. Then, the, working with, use a variety of community forums to focus groups during the fall of 2012 to gather input from citizens in order to propose the Board of Selectmen in February. A mutually agreed-upon timeline. Well, at that time, I didn't know the parents were gonna rise up and really push for a new school. So, we did the two forums in the fall, and we did meet twice with the Board of Selectmen as a school committee. And then, we had a community meeting after Sandy Hook, and I met twice with different community leaders to address the security issues at our schools. And then, as a result, we did submit the statement of interest. So, we have a timeline. Then, my fifth goal was to be ready for 2015 for the park. And more importantly, to have the technology children need to use every day in the classroom. So, we have employed the same consultant we used in 2007 to bring us up to our needs then. And now, we've employed him to do an audit to tell us what we need to be infrastructure to have connectivity and bandwidth, to have tablets in the classroom or other handheld devices like smartphones. And this work should be finished before the summer, whom we will hopefully get funding from Capital Outlay to put the infrastructure in that we need. So, this is what I have done with the work and help of others. I don't do any of this stuff by myself. I have to, it's the administrative team. All our goals are all our goals together. So, then, all you have to do is, and you decide how you're going to rate it. And one rating is on target, one's off target, and one's not started.
So, I, as a committee, I see us treating this as the way we did with the evaluation process, where if you each fill out your form individually and then submit it, and I'll collect the individual forms and come up with a summary of all five of us, and that'll be your mid-cycle evaluation.
I'm with you.
Now, this is just a check for on-target, off-target, not-started?
Correct. It's not as intense, I believe, as the final evaluation process. So, if you wanna add any comments, please do.
This is your checkup to see if I'm working on them, you know, but you can have time to review it.
We're gonna approve any vacation time for you.
Right. That's right. But to send me back to work.
Right, get back to work. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Big paper nights, was that?
It's a tree. Patrick has an update.
There we go. Facilities update. Patrick.
Okay, just a few things. We did have some over in the back building, over, over at the elementary campus in the back building, we had a Pod 1 rooftop unit, which we had a couple of problems with. Ended up with two failed boards, and we, through Dave's, working with the vendor, we had to get two rebuilt ones. And basically, that was at a cost of about $6,800 to finish that, finish that repair. We had two broken glass plane, glass panes, also over at the, at the back building, and that was about $1,800. Replacing motor-
What were the, what was the cause?
Did they get broken?
Yes. What was the cause of those windows? Were the windows or just down?
They were window panes. One of them was from plowing.
Yeah.
And the other one was from, what was the other one, Ruby? Was that the one in the, the one just shattered?
Yeah, I don't know how that-
I think it was, yeah.
Sometimes when it change in temperature, they're not the kind of glass that's tempered for that. We had it happen in the summer.
One was from plowing. So, we got those two taken care of, anyway. There was a motor of part of the compressor unit in the, for the well, and that was done in-house for a cost of $300. And again, that's, that's Dave's expertise that probably saved us a few thousand there, because he's the one that put the, put the motor in. We've had a problem up at the auditorium with, with the lighting system in the, in the, in, on the stage, in the, in the high school auditorium, and it really came out in focus when preparing for the, for the play that's coming up.
Isn't there a play coming soon?
Yeah. And there's a play coming up. So, there was a, Dave was diligently trying to work with, with a couple of vendors on this. Again, it's, it's one of those systems where the-
Let me guess, they don't make the parts anymore?
Parts aren't available. Right. So, the short-term solution is, especially for the upcoming play, is there's going to be, for a, for a short money, is gonna be some rental of lights. So, the, so the play will go on.
The show will go on, yes.
The show will go on. That's right. The long-term solution is something that Dave's working on. And there was a similar situation in a, in another local school that I am losing the name of right now. But that could lead us to, to more of a permanent-type fix. We've got a, one of our access card readers up at the, also at the high school is, by the boys locker room is not working. Vendor's researching parts, as they're, again, no longer available for our current system. But it's part of what we're gonna do with our security upgrade through Capital Outlay request. This coming Thursday, we've got a meeting at the DEP Regional Office with a group down there to discuss our wastewater treatment plant up at the high school. They had required us to do an engineering study on the flows of that system. It hasn't been permitted for the last 10 or 12 years, but they've been working on that with us. So, it's kept running under their guidance and under, with, with their cooperation. And they've been monitoring that. But now, we've gotta step that up a little bit. So, we had an engineering study done by, for a amount of Wareham. And the results of that, or the DEP's interpretation of that, or their analysis of the engineering study is gonna be shared with us on Thursday. And the result of that would be what they expect us to do with the outdated wastewater treatment plant. Is it gonna be replaced by a septic system, as we did over the elementary school? Is it going to require an upgrade to the plant? Is it gonna require a new plant? We don't know. We don't quite know yet. So, we're gonna find that out or find out a little bit more come Thursday. So, I'll update everybody on that.
And most likely, from that meeting, they'll give you some sort of timeline, I'm guessing?
Yes.
'Cause that could potentially tie into the conversations about the school building, 'cause if we're looking at one of the options potentially building over there, it's gonna need a larger septic system to handle.
That's what I was gonna, how would that ultimate decision be made, Pat, for the, for the wastewater or the septic?
Well, the ultimate decision is the DEP is gonna tell us what to do. And-
That makes it easy.
Yeah. But the, but, but then again, if the, if there's some, some designs or some thoughts on putting an additional school building up on that tract of land, then that changes things completely, because then they would require a, an upgraded septic system, 'cause, I mean, an upgraded wastewater treatment plant, because you couldn't have two septic systems in the same area. So, that would be a huge expense, only partially. And if a building were to be put up there, only a partial cost of the wastewater treatment plant could be, could be reimbursable, only the part that went to the new building. So, in any case, I'll update the committee on what the, what the DEP has for us, or any information they have as to what direction that they wanna see it go in. And one, the last thing we've got is, on our JV baseball field, way in the back of the high school campus, there, we call the foul ball canopy on top of the fence, was really twisted in the last snowstorm. So, we just took it down.
It wasn't even the blizzard. It was a storm after that. Looks like somebody did this with tinker toys or something.
Yeah, it looked, it really was bizarre to look at. And so, we just, we just removed it. It had a cost of about $2,000.
Probably not to replace it, 'cause the trees now are so tall, they block all the foul balls.
And that'll do it.
Thank you, Pat.
Next thing we have is the field trips. There are three. One is for the team next week, to go to the competition in Baltimore, so they hope we'll pass this. And the second is a class field trip to Martha's Vineyard. It's on a Saturday. And the third is a proposed trip by the Foreign Language Department to go to Madrid and Paris next spring during vacation week. And they have a lot of interest this year. They're excited. It hasn't, they haven't taken a trip since 2010, and it got delayed because of the volcanoes, volcanic ash. We didn't get to go in April, and then they went in the summer. So, and there were seniors who couldn't go, and it got complicated because of that. So, students lost a little bit of interest. But now, they were coming to them, and they had a very large group, about 20 kids and their parents, come to the initial meeting. So-
Is this, is this different than the group that went to, was it Quebec?
It's different. The group that went to Quebec again was the 9th grade class.
Okay.
9th grade or 10th grade? What group was that? Jesse?
I think it was mostly, it's one of the boys' bunch students.
Well, those are 9th and 10th graders. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Anyone who wants to go. But you have the inside information.
Yeah, this is just who wants to go.
Yeah.
It's the first time that I can recall ever voting on a potential trip. What ramifications come if dates change, or the number of students change, or if the cost changes? When, in the past, has it ever happened before, and what can we expect?
Yes. What happens is, we did change our field, international field, field trips out of state, which applied to international, is that in order for them to recruit students, we have to approve it, so that we are aware that the recruiting's going on. They'll come back to us and say we, the dates probably won't change unless there's another volcano thing. But they come back and inform us of any changes, and then we review it again. There's two parts to the form. This is part one, and then, when they come back with the list of kids and the actual things, but they can't collect any deposits, and we've done it before. But they can't collect any deposits till we do the potential approval.
I think it's fantastic.
It's great.
Well, I think maybe what, Kevin, you were referring to, 'cause it did say TBA on this form, but I think there are dates on the actual form. The Madrid-Paris one, that's TBA. This one actually has.
Yeah, that comes from the company, and they just put anything on there. So, you can, you can do this in all-in-one motion, unless you object to any one of them?
Joan's assistance is probably agreed, so I will accept the motion on behalf of-
Joe, since this is probably agreed, so I will accept the motion on behalf of the two of us.
I would like to make a motion to approve the field trips for the April eighteenth, 2013 Pro Start Invitational MHS Culinary Team going to Baltimore, Maryland, the June eighth, 2013 Grade Nine Class Trip to Martha's Vineyard, and the April eighteenth through twenty-seventh, 2014 Foreign Language Trip to Madrid and Paris.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none, it is unanimous. Thank you. With that, we will move into notes from the school committee.
I just want to say thank you, it's been an honor to serve in this committee, it is my last meeting, and I've, it, it's been a lot of great learning experience. It's pretty emotional for me to not continue on, but I've got some really good positive things happening in my family, and I'm excited to, uh, to grow with that.
Are you pregnant again?
Thanks.
No, and that's a good...
She did say her own favorite. That was out of left field, huh?
Thanks, Kevin. I might be Catholic, but I'm not that Catholic. Sorry. And on that note, signing off. And I just say exactly, maybe one...
And that's why we appreciate you, Kevin.
Yes, I exactly agree. My contribution.
I do want to kind of wrap up, but since you just, um, spoke first, uh, we'll, we'll bring you up first. And you have been a, a, a great member of our, our committee, and I know, I, I haven't get to spend the entire time of your reign with us, so to speak, um, but I've appreciated all your, uh, your passion. And I think that will be greatly missed, and, and know that, um, that spirit, hopefully we can continue, um, with, with the work of, of really unifying this, this community, and that's been your, your platform, and I've appreciated that about you and, and your insight into this community. You, you've been a part of this community for many years, and, and being a newbie, so to speak, I've appreciated your, your insight as to, uh, the workings of Carver, and, uh, we wish you the best of luck with, um, obviously your family and, uh, whatever future brings for you, and maybe someday we'll see you again here.
I appreciate that, Liz.
But, uh, we have a little gift on behalf of the Carver School Committee for something to remember, and we're proudly, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It's your crown.
There you go. I too would just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the voters for their support in the past, this is also my last meeting. Kelly and I came and are leaving together. Life has a way of redirecting certain things, so I look forward to new adventures, and I, I wish the incoming members all the luck, and hopefully, uh, good unity will occur.
Yeah, and Kevin, on behalf of the school committee, again, uh, we were out there holding signs early on, and I, I've always appreciated your insight, I think your experience in, in the town government, and the different roles that you've had, have helped, brought your, your great insight to this committee, and helped, uh, really provide many varied opinions that, that helped, uh, spark some great conversations, some great discussion, and help, uh, keep us on even keel, and I think that's been very important. And, uh, and know that you'll be missed with our committee as well. And I wish you the best of luck with your business endeavors and, and with your family as well.
Thank you.
So, we have a token for you as well?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Uh, and lastly, I just wanted to say that, as my son Brandon, those who didn't know, that was my son here earlier, um, keep your eye out for the car wash and support the captain's council, I think it's a very important portion of the community that kind of, uh, gets overlooked sometime, because there's so much going on in the community, but they do some great work. And, uh, it was mentioned earlier, there's a play coming up, hopefully everybody will take a, a night out. I've said this before, each and every year, the, every time a play comes up, it is the least expensive way to have a fantastic family night out, other than eating dinner at home and actually having a conversation with the TV off. But, uh, I implore everybody, um, whether you're a newborn or, or an elderly person in the community, hopefully you can all come down and enjoy the show.
Friday and Saturday night.
It's Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, right?
Yes. Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
I'd actually just like to, uh, put an apology out, um, on a, an engagement sort of pulled me away from something that I was hoping to attend, but I would like to congratulate the fifth graders, as I heard their science fair was a very successful night, it went over very well. And I was really looking forward to doing it, considering I'm a fifth grade teacher and have my science fair tomorrow, so I was, I was looking forward to it, but I, I got detained by something, but I hear, I heard it was a very successful event, and I'd like to congratulate them on all their hard work.
Yes, it was, they did a nice job, the teachers worked very hard, you have, you have parents, there were so many parents in attendance, the, uh, the hallways in the classrooms were cool, and we had lots of compliments from parents, so the teachers and the children just did a phenomenal job, so.
I've seen some videos, it was, it was pretty nice, yeah.
We did put a little, a few pictures in the newsletter for you to see.
And they ran Friday's Carver reporter a big page.
Yeah, a big page, yeah.
And I'll hop in here, um, sticking with the cultural theme, I just want to say, in years past, Kevin has always talked about March Music Madness and how great it is. This year was my first year, uh, going up there to check it out, and it was a really great event. Some awesome performers, singers, musicians, um, a lot of nerve to stand up in front of a cafeteria full of community members, you wouldn't find me doing it, so, uh, I thought they did a wonderful job, it was a great experience. And, um, I also just wanted to personally thank Kevin and Callie before they go. I have enjoyed, um, some passionate conversations with both of you, which I think is, um, something you can respect. I appreciate the differences and hope that you've learned as much from me as I've learned from you. And, um, lastly, town election's coming up. Um, I feel like anybody watching on TV, I'd be speaking to the choir, because anybody that watches is generally well informed, but please remind everybody to educate themselves and go vote.
Thank you, and, uh, if I may, just lastly, and I think this was a timeframe, because my mind is working that way at this time of night, but, uh, I want to commend the Reading Day, um, which I don't know if we've highlighted yet.
We, we had Community Readers' Day, it was fifteenth, it was an early release day, we had nearly forty community members come out to read with the children, and it was a great success. We took lots of pictures, and we had some takes from the culinary team from Mr. Portland, and, um, we saw some familiar faces from last year, some of our readers from last year wanting to come again, and then there were some readers that couldn't come, but they, they have spent their, sent their spouse or a relative, and they said, please, please keep us on the list, we want to come back next year, so, it was wonderful.
Yeah, it's become a great community event, and, and one that I know the kids appreciate. Um, so, my hats off to all the efforts, I know we highlighted a lot of the, the teachers there that had helped make that day possible, and again, we just want to reiterate the, uh, the great work that was done.
Yes, they did, they sure did.
Thank you. With that, I'll, uh, accept a motion to adjourn.
Callie, Kevin, why don't you guys send us off? Kevin, you start.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Excellent. Well, uh, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Coming loose, and we come back and we let it go out of your way.